This time I'll call the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four County Council meeting to order. I'll recognize the Honorable Debbie Cloninger from District Seven for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give thanks to you for providing the good things which come from your hand to our hand. Give us wisdom and strength to make the right decisions as we do the work of the people. Protect our defenders of freedom at home and abroad. We ask you, Lord, to hear our prayers. Amen.
Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everyone here tonight. It's always good to see such a good group of folks that come out and pay attention to what's going on in county business. We do have an agenda to follow through with. It doesn't look like we have any oath of offices tonight, but we will start with our appearances. First, beginning with voter registration and elections, Director Allen Helms to recognize election staff, volunteers, and polling locations.
Thank you and good evening. Basically, it's just to take a little bit of time to recognize our polling locations and our early voting sites. One of our, one of our new things we had to do this time was early voting for our voters, and we had to coordinate with other facilities. And one of our partners, York Tech, is here representing too. So, we, we used their location, the Baxter Hood Center, for about a month for early voting. So, we really do appreciate their efforts and cooperation. We also had the first United Methodist Church of Clover. They were also a polling location. And Carolina's Cornerstone Church in Fort Mill was a early voting site. All four, including our office. We had a lot of staff there, and we, they allowed us to move in for a month, and we just want to show some appreciation to them and to our election workers and to our office staff on election days. So, we look forward for an exciting year this year, and here we go, two thousand four, two thousand four, twenty-four.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have President Stacy, Dr. Stacy Moore to provide the annual report from York Technical College.
Good evening, everyone. Council members, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Since you all already know who I am, and we're really going to try to keep this to fifteen minutes, I'll introduce those from York Technical College. Please don't worry, they're not all going to talk to you and take up the time, but you'll hear from me, from two of our students, and from our CFO and Vice President for Business Services. So, very quickly, I'll introduce them so that they can then just move quickly through the updates. We have Mr. Angelo Allison, who's one of our fantastic students. Ms. Adriana Minaro, also a student, both on the Executive Leadership Council, which is a group of students that advises the Office of the President. So, they'll talk to you about their experiences at York Tech. Mr. Robbie Brown, our Assistant Vice President for Facilities Management, in the case that you have quest, questions. Mr. Jeff Sigmund is also with us tonight and members of our area commission, so serves as Commissioner, was just awarded for serving for thirty-five years on the York Technical College Commission, has served with all four Presidents of York Technical College. So, pretty amazing. Dr. Derek Bennett, who is our Vice President for Business Services and CFO. Ms. Jennifer Gama, who's our Director of Presidential Affairs. We have Ms. Jerry Rucker, who is our Chairwoman for the Area Commission for York Technical College. Mr. Charles Robinson, also one of our Commissioners, and Mr. Jeff Harden, also one of our wonderful Commissioners. So, thank you for having all of us tonight. And Karen, do you want, are you going to advance the slides?
We're both, is there not?
I don't see.
They, they was.
I'll grab it. Thank you. So, I will give you a brief update and some highlights, and then turn things over for the county budget and how we're spending money, and then to our students. So, maybe. It is now. Bam. Okay. So, a couple of data points. This is one of our favorite ones because it really is looking at the most recent data from the Commission on Higher Education. That's our spring twenty-one high school graduates from all three counties in our service area, York, Chester, and Lancaster. And this is where did they go to college in the fall? So, this takes every single high school senior, where did they go? And by far, they go to York Tech. So, that, in our mind, makes us the number one choice among college-going seniors in our service area. So, we're very proud of and excited about that. To give you a glimpse of our, our enrollment, the top line you're looking at is our annual enrollment, which is our unduplicated fall, spring, summer in a given year. It's up eleven percent. Our fall head count, that blue line, is up an additional four percent this year. Our spring enrollment is tracking an additional three percent from last year. So, we've had a very strong recovery from COVID, and our enrollment is up well beyond our pre-COVID levels. So, we're very excited about that and appreciate all of your support there. The next couple of slides are just some highlights in our three major, what we consider our centers for excellence. So, we have three major areas that based on our strategic direction and our master plan that we're heavily focused on: healthcare and health sciences, advanced manufacturing, information technology. So, these are already areas of strength for the college that we're then expanding, building upon, adding new programs. So, some highlights, we always like to highlight our nursing program. It is ranked in the top five, number two this year. That's based on board passes rates for the registered nursing board exam in the state. So, you'll see, we're the only two-year college in the top five, and we rank consistently as number one or number two. The other great thing about some of our healthcare programs, if I give you just a few of the others, our medical lab technology program is a hundred percent board passage rate on the first try. Both the registered nurse and the LPN nursing are a hundred percent board passage rate on the first try. Dental hygiene, dental assisting, also at a hundred percent. Our other programs, surgical technology, our EMT, our paramedic, our RadTech, hit in the high seventies to ninety percent on the first try, and then hit that hundred percent on the second attempt. So, very strong there. When we look at really ensuring that York County remains a center of excellence broadly in advanced manufacturing, one that we already are, it's a huge area for us. Most of you probably have seen, we were awarded a one-point-six-million-dollar grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration, excuse me. We have more in the hopper in terms of grants with some of our company partners as well, Albemarle, others that you will see. We have two Skills USA national champs last year in our machine tool technology program. That machine tool technology program has also been selected to work with NASA to build parks for the International Space Station. So, that's great. Our welding program, I mean, we teach welding programs that start at ten o'clock at night because we're so overloaded with welding. We have to teach it all the time. So, that is growing heavy on dual enrollment. Areas you'll see grow there is more of our short-term and stackable credentials in those areas. Process technology, so chemical process technology for some of our industries coming into the area, plastics welding, plasma welding, biotech, and biopharma, all areas that we're working on. Terms of information technology, very heavily focused on cybersecurity, as we all are of late. York Tech is now part of the American Association of Community Colleges Cybersecurity for All Grant. That's a best practices. That's working with the colleges in the country that really have high-level best-practice programs, building that model for the country around education and cybersecurity. We were just asked by the South Carolina Department of Ed to be a pilot program for dual enrollment cyber, cybersecurity. That's our program with Clover School Districts. And it's a good example, if you, if you look at what's on your slide. Our programs are built so that we have our short-term industry credentials within that program, so that a student can get any of those built into the program if they need to step out. That's what we call stackable credentials. That's fine. They have work-based credentials they can work from. So, if you get our cybersecurity degree, you're also going to have all four of those certifications before you are finished. Then if you look for a minute, I'm just going to talk briefly about our workforce and economic development area. That area is our really short-term credentials. You know, those things that might be a few weeks, could be just a day long, could be a few months, and our non-credit and continuing ed all fall in that area. They do all of our corporate training. So, they had a one-point-six-million-dollar corporate training sales goal. They exceeded that. And then importantly, they run our apprenticeships and other work-based learning programs. So, you see just tremendous growth in companies really coming on to apprenticeship, which is one of the models for your most loyal workforce pipelines. So, you see just incredible growth. This year alone, they worked with over sixty-five companies in York County broadly. So, whether that was in training, corporate training, whether that was in apprenticeships, building other programs, et cetera. This gives you a sense of what that non-credit and workforce area, some of their focus over the next one to three years. One of the huge benefits of that area is they can incubate a program. So, before we go to the state to say, hey, we need this whole new program, they can get it running within a day if you want it, or within a few weeks. Incubate it, we can decide, does it have enough demand to continue moving forward? If yes, then we, we continue it. We may move it on to the credit side. And if not, we let it go and move on because if nothing else, we need to remain relevant to the industries that we serve in this county. All right. I am going to turn things over now to Dr. Bennett.
Good evening. I won't keep you long, but I would like to start off with some of our major, one of our major accomplishments this year, which is our dental clinic. It was a four-point-two-million-dollar renovation of sixty-seven hundred square feet. Our goal there was to make sure that we provide students with the most up-to-date technology in order to help them succeed. That takes care of our dental hygienist and dental assistant programs, which are vital to our economy. We expanded from eighteen to twenty-six operatories. We expanded from eight radiology rooms to, from six, added a sterilization center. And these are some photos of that, observatory and sterilization. Like I said, they're up to date with the technology, provide great resources for our students. This is the radiology room and a resource center that we added with that renovation. Now, we go on briefly to our financials. For FY three, which ended in June of last year, our biggest expenditure was the court's plant operations, and then second to that was utilities. That is consistent with our prior years, plant operations, its maintenance, and things like that, that are needed for the college to keep, upkeep. And then our utilities along with inflation is higher. For comparison, as of February from twenty-three to twenty-four, you see that our total cost through February is sixty-one percent. That's up about seven percent from last year. Most of that is due to we've had several vacancies filled. We were understaffed in FY twenty-three. But with some new initiatives, we've been able to increase our staffs. Specifically in plant operations, you can see an increase from forty-nine percent to sixty-seven percent. That's where most of our vacancies were. That's where we hold our maintenance and our HVAC and everyone, everything else that deals with maintaining our campus. We also had a small increase in utilities year-to-date. That's two percent. That's in line with inflation. We expect to end our year spending at least ninety-eight percent more compared to last year. Some of our major capital improvements this year were building improvements. We spent seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand on that. Utilities and infrastructure and upgrades, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. And then site improvements like Baskin's Road, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand. And then some HVAC improvements of three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand. So, we've had a busy year. We have quite a few things going on this year. We appreciate your support, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are so blessed here in York County to have superior higher education opportunities here. Dr. Moore and all of the members of the board, you guys make us proud when you present to us what actually is being done. You're a strong steward of the taxpayer dollar, and you provide a bang for the buck when it comes to our community being able to have education that actually can result in job training and getting jobs immediately out, out of, of school. I will say, I'm a little bit biased because this the first year of my, actually, second year, my middle child is doing the nursing program at York Tech. It's been very challenging for her, but it's been a very good program for her. She's starting her clinicals. I'm very thankful of the program that you guys provide and the fact that you, you get our folks and our kids into jobs immediately. I'm sure that we have some comments and questions from other council, but just want to thank you for the tremendous job that you do here in our county.
I just want to jump in real quick. Can you go back to the very first slide? I think it showed where, how York Tech's attracting high school graduates.
Mm-hmm.
And, and as she's going back to pull it up, I'll say, I'm a proud alumni of York Tech. I started my college career at York Tech. I was one of those students that didn't really know what I wanted to do, but by going to York Tech, it certainly helped me find out who I was, what I wanted to do.
Absolutely.
Much smaller class. I, much, much more than offered, just walking out of a high school classroom into a huge college classroom. So, great opportunity for me to get my footing and, you know, really excelled and took off from York Tech, went on to Winthrop. But I wanted to show this slide because everybody talks about how the big universities with all the football teams get all the big students, but this shows right here, you don't need a football team to attract good students. And I think if York Tech had a football team, it'd probably be twice as that amount. But, but it just goes to show you that we are a great value for the money. And even if you take the money out of it, it's still a great asset and opportunity because the cost is unbelievable. It's like, I don't want to call York Tech the Honda Core, but you're kind of like the hybrid Honda Core if you're the Honda Core. You get more gas mileage, you get more for your money. But thanks for what you guys do, and I'm certainly appreciative of the opportunities that I was afforded to go to York Tech. And they're even better now with the, with, I think, you guys still do the tuition, the offset with tuition?
Yep, through, through this spring, summer, excuse me, through this summer. So, that will end as of the fall. However, for our technical programs, which is the vast majority of them, so for seventy percent or so of our students, it will continue for most of your tuition and program fees to be covered.
And I'll say the last comment. If I had to do it all over again, I would still choose York Tech over any other route to get my foot in the door at a four-year university.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I do, real quick. First of all, thank you for what y'all are doing. I tell you, you guys are a shining light on top of that hill. It's amazing what y'all do. It's, and it's a tribute to you all as, as, as a group and what you're driving for. One of the things that's amazing in, in what you do, and you talked about it a little bit, was to understand the needs of businesses out there, right? And, and you're very agile in that, that approach, which is phenomenal. So, it really is a big impact to our businesses that are wanting to come in the area. So, thank you for what you're doing. And my daughter did graduate from there, too. So, there you go. Beautiful. Thank you.
It touches us all. We appreciate the work you do. If y'all don't mind, if you, Dr. Moore, and the board could come forward, let's get a picture with the council. We do like to, normally, we have a visit when we go to yours, but if not, if we can get a, a picture with council?
Absolutely.
Just show our support.
Thank you, Wash. You're such a good friend, Jim.
Thank you.
We do have a big group. Wide, wide-angle lens.
Got y'all there. Are you ready?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great seeing you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
See you, Robby.
That concludes our appearances for tonight. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity where folks in, in the community can come forward and speak to council. We don't have the opportunity to respond back, so I would ask that you keep your comments restricted to county business and not calling anybody out individually. And we are here to listen. If it is a matter of public hearing, which I don't think we have a public hearing tonight, as I look now, we do not. So, we don't have that issue to contend with. When I call your name, if you would please come forward, state your name and give your address before you start your two minutes. And if you'll kindly pay attention to the screen, it will go to a yellow when you're getting close to your time being up, and then it'll go to red. And if you can stop your comments so that I don't have to and be rude, I would very much appreciate that. Our first up is Teresa Grobels.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Grobels. I live at four-seventy West Rambo Road in Rock Hill. And the reason I'm here to speak is because I'm opposed to the rezoning of three-ninety West Rambo Road for many of the reasons that our neighbors have previously mentioned. We purchased our five-acre property in two thousand eleven and built our house in two thousand sixteen. Building on blackjack was quite a challenge. We had to install more than the typical amount of leach field due to proper drainage, um, to poor drainage. We were not aware of this until we submitted our plans with the county. So, we faced additional challenges. We also had to install on our well a sediment filter, a whole-home filter, and a water softener because the water is very hard. We also did not realize this when we purchased the property. Within the first two years, we had to replace a new dishwasher, several bathroom fixtures due to the hard water. When it rains, even for just one day, we have to limit doing laundry and running the dishwasher because the septic will fill with water from the ground being so saturated. We installed a French drain around the septic field, and even that outlet floods and doesn't allow the, the water to drain properly. We live right on Stony Fort Creek, and it tends to overflow and flood half of my yard when it rains. The county stormwater department was out to our property a few weeks ago and noted the poor soil drainage. Three-ninety also has a creek that runs through the entire property. So, that's going to cause a problem there, too. Knowing the issues that we and many of our other neighbors deal with, I don't feel three-ninety West Rambo should be rezoned to accommodate three houses. The properties to the west of it on Rambo Road are a downhill slope from that property. Their drainage issues will become our issues. We purchased our land because it was zoned AGC and invited by the zone requirements. I don't feel somebody else should be able to come in, buy a piece of property knowing what it's zoned for, and then try to have it changed just to suit their ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kirk Grobels?
Hi, my name's Kirk Grobels, four-seventy West Rambo Road. Us, everybody's heard about the environmental issues, the water runoff and all that. I'm going to base my speech on the planning commission's report for twenty-three forty-seven, case twenty-three forty-seven. Like I said, the builder purchased a three-point-nine-acre lot with the intention of rezoning for his own financial gain. Based on this planning commission's report, when you take away the right-of-way because it's on the corner lot, it reduces the lot size at three-point-five acres. And like Teresa said, when Mark Boland from the stormwater commission came out, and he notified us that there is a riverine, which is what a Army Corps of Engineers calls the continuous body of waterway, which is three-hundred-twenty-five feet on his back property line. The bound, the buffer of that is either fifty feet or a hundred feet. Mark wasn't sure. Based on the minimum fifty feet, would reduce that lot size by another quarter acre, reduce it to three-point-two-five acres. Even though the lot is part of the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive world residential plan, and that states the designation is described as a place displaying a rural character or agricultural homesteads and homes with acre lots or more, land separated by farm fields, pastures, or forests. With the proposed, the builder's proposal to separate the three lots, that is, this is not enough real estate. You can't do it. Also, currently, if under, not under thirty, twenty-thirty-five, but the current zoning restrictions for RUD, it says it's supposed to, the county there, especially presently rural or agricultural in character, and use serves to discourage rapid growth while growing, while growth through orderly use and a timely transition. To me, this is, everything says it's, it's spot zoning. I mean, even in the other, additional, it says the surrounding area includes homes or lots ranging from ten to a hundred acres. Putting three acres in the middle of that, it just, it won't fit. It won't, it won't fit the community. And I think that was the builder's intention to get go, this financial gain, and I, in total disregard for our community.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Warren?
Good evening, council members. I'm Margaret Warren. I live at thirty-four twenty-four Skyline Road in Rock Hill. I live across from this piece of property and actually within view of it. This is a beautiful area. It has a great place for grown farms and animals, but it's a difficult place to put sewer, septic drainage systems in. The water is always a problem, as our neighbors have all told you. We have our blackjack soil. It's just a piece of clay. It's perfect for pottery, but it's not good for septic systems, and it turns into bricks in the summertime. My home, just to keep it running, has to have demineralization systems, a softener for the salt, hard water, and a reverse osmosis systems. Without them, all of our appliances are scaled up. The developer bought this property in November of twenty-three. He must have assumed that the county water and that there was county water and sewer on this piece. As he did check on his application with the planning commission, that he was intending, intending to use public and sewer water. It's not a public water and sewer, excuse me. It's not there. So, rezoning the AGC for concentrated rental homes with no public facilities should not even be considered by the council, as that would be a disservice to any renters coming forward, that they've suddenly got all of their toilets unable to flush and bad drinking water. Putting three sewer septics on that piece of land, less than an acre a piece, and three wells? I'm concerned about what kind of water does the next person that rents this piece of property, what kind of water are they drinking? Because this water does not leave. I think Councilman Roddy was going to have a second meeting with the members of the community and Mr. and the developer. I don't think that happened in the last two weeks. So, that's, that didn't come together. And I believe this piece of property is on this twenty-twenty-three comp plan. It's one of the lowest, furthest-down pieces away from the middle of that plan. Wouldn't we start where we have infrastructure already in place before we start changing things at the furthest, most faraway place?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to just say, what's a fat law for one person is actually a protection for the other ones.
Thank you, ma'am. Jordan Nab?
Good evening. My name is Jordan Nab. I live at four-fifty West Rambo Road with my family. It's the thirty-seven-acre sheep farm directly across from the property that we've been talking about. I'm a licensed attorney in North and South Carolina. I've been investing in real estate for nineteen years, both residential and commercial. And in my opinion, I would like to speak to the implications of allowing this variance. This investor, if you do a search in the York County Registered Deeds, has done seventeen transactions since September of twenty-twenty-one. So, this investor is not new to investing or the area. This investor knew that this was zoned agricultural, and this investor did not predicate that the zoning variance be granted as part of the contract with the previous owner. That is irresponsible investing. That is investing that is high-risk, high-reward, and it sets a bad precedent for the council if we reward that behavior by allowing someone to come in, buy a piece of property for relatively low cost, and then take a, I will then ask for forgiveness, not permission, stance. It doesn't allow the investor to protect his purchase. It doesn't allow the seller to understand what exactly his purchase, the land is going to, and it doesn't allow the county to understand exactly what variances may be allowed as part of the property. So, if you do not, you know, have a, a contract that says, I would like to get a variance, and I would like to buy your property, let's put a clause in the contract, then you end up with this situation. If this situation is then rewarded, there's nothing stopping this investor from continuing the same tactic in Union County. I'm sorry, York County. I used to live in Union County. In addition, this sort of transaction will sort of light the fire for other sharks to come to York County and begin this same process. It will begin with larger sharks, then it will go to land trusts who will buy up the farms. And eventually, you'll have Lennar and D.R. Horton and national landowners taking the same tactic where they don't have to give fair notice to everyone exactly why, why it's being, why this land is being developed this way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vincent Blackwell?
I'm Vincent Blackwell. I live at thirty-one twenty-nine Sims Road, right beside the, the property we were talking about. And I'm still concerned about the environmental part of it, the, the three-seventy tanks and the wells. My well's right near the property line of this adjacent property. And I don't want to drink the sewer water, and I don't want it to go in our creeks and streams for the folks down river to drink either. And I'm hoping that we can get this stopped. I mean, three, two houses is too many. And I did say three or two, two or three. But I'm just hoping that we can stop the rezoning of this property. And I appreciate all your time. I'm not going to keep saying everything I've already said. Y'all know my stance on it, and I've talked to, to everyone. And I'm hoping we can take care of this. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Tommy Palmer?
Tommy Palmer, fifty-three seventy-five South Fork Road, speaking on the rezoning case twenty-four oh nine. Speaking on the rezoning case 2409. Last council meeting, there was a motion and a motion of approval with a deed restriction. And I would ask the county, if they pursue that, would you please find out from staff if there's a way to show that on the zoning map as still green, still AGC green with hash marks? So the county, so the staff would know in any future rezoning things that there's not a, just a yellow RUD thing right there in our neighborhood. They just assume that and recommend rezoning for future RUD stuff, if that makes any sense. In other words, we don't want this establishing any precedence for future RUD in our rural community out there. The second thing, it was brought up at the last meeting by staff, that the right of way for our properties in the entire York County has been declared not ours, which is the reason that Mr. Miller is trying to rezone it so he can build a third house on this property. I would ask council to please get with staff to find out how that decision was made to declare the right of way not our property and how it was done, when it was, was there a public hearing done? Was it done in due process? And also, why our tax bill still represents the full, like my property's 10 acres, I still get billed, the tax bill for 10 acres. But according to staff at the last meeting, the right of way is not ours to do with.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Karen Fitzgerald.
Karen Fitzgerald, I live at 5277 South Fork Road, and I'm also talking about the zoning case 2409. I do oppose rezoning from agriculture to rural. If this is approved, then where does it end? They could also potentially put four houses on the four acre lot. And we are not far from Rambo Road, and we actually have the same water issues with the same blackjack. So it's just not feasible. But I understand that Mr. Miller was under the, thought he could put that extra house on there, and there was the clerical error that deemed the right of way is not part of his property. So now, I'm not opposed to rebuilding that one house because if that not have happened, he could have built it anyway. But if we could just do it as, leave it as agriculture and then just do a deed restriction and not change it into RUD.
Thank you, ma'am. Elvis Del Santos.
Good evening, council members. My name is Elvis Del Santos, and I stand before you today as a real estate investor with a vision for responsible development in our community, talking about 390 West Rambo Road. I'm here to request your support for the rezoning proposal of 390 West Rambo Road. This proposal, which has already received approval from the planning commission in the York County Planning and Development Department, aligns with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and seeks to rezone the property from agriculture to RUD. This will allow for the subdivision of the land into three separate parcels for residential development. As someone deeply invested in the Rock Hill area and with a track record of successful development projects, I am committed to enhancing our community while respecting its character and environment. The proposed development would not only provide much-needed housing options, but also add value to the neighborhood. I understand that some of the neighbors have expressed concerns, and I want to assure you that we are addressing them diligently. We have engineers to resolve any drainage issues on the property, and the use of engineered septic systems will ensure proper wastewater treatment without any risks of drinking water sources. Furthermore, the additional three homes on the property will not significantly change the character of the community. Rather, it will contribute positively to the existing neighborhood fabric. In conclusion, I urge you to consider the merits of this rezoning proposal and support its approval. Together, we can continue to build a vibrant and thriving community for all the residents. Thank you for all your time and considerations.
Thank you, sir. Dwayne Miller.
How you doing today? My name is Dwayne Miller. I'm the one who has a property on 5393 South Fork Road. Like I said, I'm just trying to provide a way of living for my family. I bought the property with the intentions that it was 15 acres, not knowing that they was going to take the roadway away from me. While in the process of doing that, it hampers my development of the property because my neighbors upset that I could possibly build more homes on that property than what I really want to do. But what I did was I drew up some paperwork here to let them know that I only want to build three. It won't be anything less than what I'm planning to do. So if it helps, I do have a solution to it. But again, I need your help just to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dean Fale.
Good evening. My name's Dean Fale. I live at 3044 Wexford Drive. And all of you also know that I'm president of our, like, York County Regional Chamber of Commerce. I just about moved back to Lancaster for a minute. Been three years, you would think. I'm actually here tonight to speak on behalf of a good friend of mine who I went to high school with, played basketball with, Mr. Rick Korn. He's seeking to do some rezoning. It's case number 23-19. Like I said, known Rick since high school, known him and his family, you know, good business people, lived here in York County his whole life, and is really looking out to do the right thing. And I've had the opportunity to meet with him over the last four to five months on this particular project. He's really making every effort to do something that would make his family proud and offer a service to small businesses and a product that we don't currently have for a lot of our small businesses, a rental opportunity for them that I think is needed in this area. So along with both staff recommendations and planning council recommendations to approve, I respectfully ask council to approve this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Allison Blackman.
Thank you. I'm Allison Blackman. I live at 1846 Townes Court in Rock Hill. I'm here to speak on behalf of the rezoning case 2319. I am a licensed property manager and have been in South Carolina for over 16 years. And over eight of those years, I have been servicing the Korn family with their mini properties. Currently, in the market for York County, we have two flex warehouse spaces, just two. One is a class maybe C-D. It's a large, just older building, built in 1968, and it is in the middle of a mobile home park and very close to Spring Street in Rock Hill. The other is a Class A property in Fort Mill, built in 1984. But there's only one space left, and it's 1895 square feet. There's just no opportunity for the smaller businessman who wants to open his own HVAC company, his plumbing company, lawn care. Unless you're going to a monster big box, 175,000 square foot area, there's just nothing for that small businessman. So I am asking council to please approve this. I think it would be a benefit for all of York County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dave Oxendine.
Good evening. My name is Dave Oxendine of 2550 Neely Store Road. And before I begin, I found this packet out in the parking lot, and I didn't know if, well, I guess I do know who it belongs to.
Oh, my gosh. Can't do that. I did not know that was happening, though.
Michael did.
I'm embarrassed.
But I want to take this opportunity to speak on behalf of the first item under your old business. I serve in a number of different roles with the Small Business Development Center as well as with the chamber with Dean. Matter of fact, Dean, I and Rick Korn played basketball for the Bearcats many years ago. So if we had a couple more players, we'd have a challenge for the Orange Jimenez. So anyway, Rick, as Dean said, he's been a successful businessman for a number of years. He has two BP stores, one at the mall and the other over at Anderson Road. So, you know, small business is very important, and I believe the rezoning of this property would definitely help additional businesses to achieve the goals they want to achieve and also provide some benefit to the citizens of York County. So having read the packet and looking at all the diligent work that he's done, even getting the signatures from adjacent landowners, I think this is a well-positioned place for your approval. So I ask for your favor in supporting this. Should I just leave these here?
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. We do appreciate everyone for coming out and expressing your thoughts and feelings on this. I just became aware that perhaps I cut off some of the discussion from York Tech. If I did that, I really, I want to open that back up if there's something that we didn't get to put out there. That was totally my fault rushing through things.
It was not at all your fault, and I appreciate you. If you have two minutes, we have two students who want to talk to you.
Please let them come forward. They have sat through this, and I apologize.
All right. So I'm Angelo Allison. I live in Clover, South Carolina, and this is my first year at York Technical College. And I can already say that, or I'm studying graphic design and digital illustration, and I've already been able to put some of those skills to work. I have some people looking to hire me part-time to be a designer for the Honors Institute of PTK, which is one of the clubs and organizations we have on campus. And these club and organizations that we have available to us not only teach us good leadership skills, but they also allow us to take those skills and apply them to future businesses we hope to develop and create in the future. So they're great to have.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adri Minaro. I am the VP of Service for Phi Theta Kappa. I am also the president and founder of ASL Club in York Technical College and also a part of the Executive Leadership Council. I just really want to advocate for our clubs and orgs as well. They have really helped me step out of that COVID-induced social anxiety that I feel like everyone kind of got a little bit. I also got the, I also got the ability to be able to advocate for other students at DC recently with Angelo and Dr. Moore and Jen, which was really incredible opportunity to be able to advocate for, again, all students in South Carolina, or community college students in all South Carolina. Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you both. We appreciate you being here to, sorry, I cut y'all off early on. Apparently, I'm on a roll tonight because I also overlooked one person on the public forum sessions, and I'm going to allow Mr. Luke Dwyer to come forward. Thank you again for all the folks who came out from York Tech. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Luke Dwyer from 1751 Red Cedar Lane, here on behalf of 2404 rezoning. Woodfield is a little family-friendly neighborhood in Rock Hill. There's one street in and three cul-de-sacs off of it. There's a lot of kids that play everywhere in our neighborhood and families that walk the neighborhood. It's just the perfect, we call it the hidden gem. Over half of our neighborhood has served the community, including military, sheriff, firefighter, teachers, as well as several pastors in our neighborhood. And it's time the community looks after them and doesn't allow our neighborhood to be destroyed. I have a petition from our whole neighborhood, right here. It's three pages long, everyone in our neighborhood, requesting that you put it in writing that the two cul-de-sacs that have a right of way, that you won't let any other neighborhood tie into ours and wreck our neighborhood because we don't want people cutting through it and destroying our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So unless I miss somebody else. That concludes our public forum session. Do we have, do you want to pull that out? We do have Boy Scouts here tonight. Which troop is this?
31.
Troop 31. Folks, do y'all want to come up here and get a picture in front of council? Are you doing your badge for having to sit through one of these great meetings? You picked a good night. Why don't y'all come forward? Let's get a picture with you.
There you go.
I've got to spread out. Good crowd. Thank you for coming, Troop 31. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being here tonight. You get to learn a lot.
Appreciate y'all.
All short stuff here. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to three.
Have a motion?
Were you going to pull something out or something?
Do it.
What item? So under consent agenda, any council member can pull anything out of this, and we will move that. Mr. Huckabee.
Yes, I'd like to pull number two and move it to old business.
All right, we will move number two. To item number five in old business. Any others that we need to remove? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda without amendment?
Motion to approve with the amendment of moving item number two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now straight to our old business. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Our first item of old business is rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number 23-19. Tax map number 618000056057058. To rezone from RUD to LI, 10.67 acres in District 5.
Motion to approve with deed restriction as noted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is, this is a rezoning that's in my district. The first reading was had a while back, a good long while back, and the original proposal was something that the community did not support. Since that time, the parcel owner, who has owned the property for a long time, has worked with the community residents, it's my understanding, has worked with the residents in the area and has formulated a deed restriction. I've not seen that deed restriction, but this is second reading. We still have a third reading to get through. But that the deed restriction basically takes most of the LI uses out and restricts it to a lot of the wholesale uses. It limits it to 45,000 square feet of development. It is close to the interstate, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And most importantly, I think this property owner did work with all of the adjacent parcel owners to prepare his proposal. And it's my understanding that all of the adjacent property owners are supportive of this plan, understanding that it is very close to the interstate where small business can be located. And this will fill a need for some of our smaller businesses, such as our electrical workers, our plumbers, to have a place to work out of those businesses. So this was something that I think was a culmination of work in the area. I've spoken with citizens on both sides of the issue beforehand and afterwards and understand that this is something that the community supports, and I think this is a good way to find reconciliation on that. So I do support second reading on this, and we can circle back and take a look at the deed restrictions, make sure they match up with what was communicated to the community, and so I do support that. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving now to item number two in old business. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 23-47. Tax map number 529000031. To rezone from AGC to RUD, 3.98 acre parcel in District 4.
I want to ask council to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to start out by saying this is just the second reading, and I want to go back and address some points that were made. address some points that were made. I'll start out by saying that I was contacted and met with the neighbors. It was about 15 of them showed up on very short notice. Ms. Teresa called a meeting together. I was able to meet with the neighbors, hear their concerns. One of my major concerns was the water in the roadway, which I thought was a bigger issue at the time over whether, what was discussed about the actual property. We put in a request to DOT to try to address the water issue in the roadway. We have yet to hear back from that. I haven't given up hope on trying to address the water in the roadway. In the meantime, one of the speakers today said that I was supposed to get back with them and the builder. I never promised to meet with them and the builder, but I can meet with everyone. But I don't think at this point it's going to be productive because people have already expressed what they want, what they don't want. I've spoken with the builder. He understands your concerns about what Mr. Blackwell is concerned about, about the, his well, his septic tank. I've heard from Kurt, who works at the same facility I work with, I've heard his concerns. Everybody has a concern about the water leaving the property. I was assured by staff that all the concerns of the neighbors with the distance from the well will be addressed with the building plan and erosion and what is it though, runoff plan. There's been concern about staying away from the creek or the ravine that runs through the property. Even if this is rezoned with the expectations of three houses being built, there are some conditions that still have to be met and this property still may not even hold three units. The understanding about the engineered septic system, I've heard that they are even more up-to-date, much more reliable than some of the older systems that's on some of the existing homes. Not to discount the fact that several neighbors have spoken about having to replace dishwashers and obstacles that they've had to deal with living on blackjack soil, the drainage, the water conditions. These issues of the property will be addressed when it's deemed that the property can only hold, whether it's two houses or just one house, because of the setbacks, because of the water running through the property. There's a creek there. Has to be setback so far from the creek. Has to be setback so far from the neighbor's well and septic tank. So even though we're looking, or the builder's looking to do three homes, it may not even work for three homes. So we don't know this until everything's decided of the setbacks and what could possibly go there. The planning commission said yes to this rezoning. Staff has said yes and they've done way more vetting than what we have done. The 20, 2035 plan, it fits that. It's very difficult to tell a petitioner no when staff has said yes, planning commission says yes, and it fits the comp plan. Even without knowing, can this property hold three units? I don't think it's fair to say no at this stage. If there's, if the property can't hold three units, I think it will be decided by the setbacks that have to be met with the water ravine that runs through the property. The distance away from Vincent Blackwell's well and septic tank, DHEC is not going to let anybody put a well and septic close to another individual's well and septic. There has to be a distance. Jonathan, are you prepared to pull up the area map?
I don't have the ability to pull up a map from where I'm.
What was in the packet?
From, I don't have the ability to pull that up. It's all on, on one computer on the other side of the dais. But I think your question to me related to parcels of similar size that could be in the RUD district. And so there are, within 1,000 feet of the subject property, there are nine parcels that are currently between one and two acres, which would be the acreage range of, of the potential parcels if there were, this was to be rezoned to RUD.
And I made a note here and it said I've talked, I've spoken with staff diligently about the concerns of neighbors and other area properties. So when it comes up, some of the concerns of neighbors about this doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood, staff just said there are nine parcels within 1,000, say 1,000 feet of this particular property. So we're not rezoning something that's totally out of character. I've tried to address every concern by every neighbor who's contacted me, taken those concerns to staff. A lot of those concerns were told to me that it will be addressed at the next phase when the builder comes in, applies for, whether it's the building permit, he has to submit an erosion plan, he has to submit a stormwater plan. So it wasn't, it won't be fair to the petitioner to say no because of these concerns exist, knowing that these concerns can be addressed by paperwork and, and plans that will be submitted at a later date. I want to be fair to the neighbors. That's why I took every single concern that everyone's contacted me on, took them directly to staff, got answers, talked directly to the builder. He says, yes, sir, when we move forward, it will be deemed whether three homes can go there, two homes, or just one home. So those concerns are legitimate, but those questions will get answered at a later stage. And I know I've spoken with several council members that felt like this wasn't the right thing to do, but I don't think it would be right to say no at this juncture when the three decision-makers or three bodies, which was the planning commission, our staff, and the comp plan says this is doable. And if we turn down rezonings every time, and I'm not discounting anybody's concern because I've taken those concerns to every step of the way. And if there were one that wouldn't be addressed at a later date, I can see saying this is not the right thing to do. But every concern except the water in the roadway, and we do have a request from DHEC, well, not DHEC, we do have a request in to DOT to address those issues. I just don't think it's the right thing to say no, knowing that some questions that have been brought up will be answered. And if they're not able to be addressed, this builder will not be able to move forward with his ideal plans. Ideally, he wants to do three. And knowing the drainage issues that he's going to have to address with the engineered septic, the runoff that he's going to have to address, our staff and DHEC is not going to let him do something on that property that negatively impacts, impacts his neighbors. And I don't do a lot of calling around saying vote for this, I'll vote for that. I just want to put the facts out, what I'm looking at. We still have another reading to go through. I've even asked a gentleman who's looking to do the building, would he consider doing two homes? He said ideally he'd like to do three, but if he can only do two, he'll have to go back and adjust his business plan for this property. And the last thing I'll address is people purchase property all the time with the expectation to rezonate. All the time we get rezonings. Much bigger pieces of property have come before us and we've rezoned and we've put hundreds of homes on. The item we just saw in front of this one, rezoning, I think it was just the JM Southern Properties. We've seen several business people come up and speak for another individual. Buying property to rezonate to make a profit is not a dirty thing. Someone built my home, made a profit on it. Someone probably built your home and made a profit on it. We can't start saying just because people purchase property as an investment, as a business venture, that we shouldn't do rezonings. Because I assure you, when Rock Hill was just forming across the whole county, it had to get rezoned to build houses in neighborhoods somewhere. And this is only three homes. And at that rate, probably won't end up being three homes. So I'm asking council to consider the facts, and I know some of you are a little reluctant to support this, but support it on the facts. I can look Mr. Blackwell in the eye and say, I've taken every concern. I can look Curtis in the eye, I can look Teresa in the eye and say, I've addressed all your concerns to staff. Here are the answers. If I couldn't do that, I wouldn't be sitting up here asking for approval. And I, I do this with every time I face with an opportunity to address, because rezonings are controversial, but they shouldn't be controversial if I can supply you the answer to your concern. I think I've done that with Vincent. I've met with Vince. I've talked to Kurt at work. I've met with Kurt, I just saw you just last week in the day. I, I, I take, I take my constituents' concerns to staff. Vincent is the next-door neighbor. His concern is about his well and septic. I checked with staff. Staff said there's no way this builder can put a well and septic within so many feet of Vincent's well. There's even been talks with the builder and Mr. Vincent about acquiring some additional property. They haven't agreed on it, but they've had some conversations about purchasing a little bit of the property to get further away from his well and septic. I don't think it's right to cut those conversations off. We do have another reading. If there's any more concerns, I will meet with this, the neighbors. I will meet with the builder. But we know people have already held bent, one way or another, on whether three houses can go there, two houses. One even suggested, can you get him not to build any houses? That wouldn't be fair to do. Rent the land out to someone with horses. That's not what he purchased it for. Someone paid money for the property. Someone paid to position, to petition to rezonate. I think we owe every opportunity, if it can work, allow it to work. And if the process doesn't allow for three homes, it will show itself at the next phase. But we're charged with a rezoning. We don't look into how much someone paid for the property. We don't look at how much they're going to make off the property. Our job is to look at the facts and the facts are, people purchase property all the time to rezonate. I will state my 13 years up here, this is how I've done it this time, this is how I've always done it. It's unfortunate that some people don't want new neighbors. It's unfortunate that this gentleman may not get to do three homes. So with that being said, I'm asking my colleagues to respect the second reading. We still have another reading to go. And if it's the wish of the neighbors and the builder, if we want to have a meeting, we can meet over at a county facility. And we can still hash out any other concerns that we're faced with. But I assure you, everybody who I've talked to, I've taken those concerns to staff. And with that being said, I ask that my council supports the second reading, knowing that we still have two more weeks to get to the third reading.
So I'll go. I made the second. So I seconded this to keep this communication open to, to get it at least a third reading. I'm not a fan of rezoning from ag to RUD or anything, anything below that under normal circumstances. We're talking about 3.98 acres. What I would like to see, Jonathan, if you could get from me, would be what are the setbacks? What are the setbacks going to look like? I'd just like to see, I mean, if I, if I were the person developing here, my first question would be, what, where, where can I build on this property? And can I get three, three homes in there or am I looking at two? You know, a lot of times we try to put a square peg in a round hole. And it's, it's, you know, it's very important to me that, that people come first, you know, when you, then when you're talking about agricultural land, we're talking about generally people who own their own, who own that property and they live there. So when you bring in someone who may or may not be going to live there and they're doing three houses, they're only going to live in one of those houses if they are planning to come. So now we have a, maybe, I don't know if he's selling them, I don't know if he's renting them. I just, I'd like to know a little bit more about that because it does change the landscape of a community. So I just am, I'm not sure about the adding value part of it, but I do feel like that any, any developer that's coming in, you know, I'm not big on developers list, people they, you know, people like me very much, but try to support local developers and people that are trying to do the right thing. And just, I think respecting that community is, is very important. So I would love to see more about what that plan is actually going to look like because I feel like what, what we might be approving is, you know, I can't remember the term, gosh, age sets in, but you know, when you buy something, you buy a bag of something, you're not sure what's in it. So I feel like we could be, that, that could be a situation. And I'm not familiar with blackjack area down there and I'm not familiar with where exactly this is and how close is the, how close the other houses are to it. But I promise you, I'll look at it a little harder between now and third reading.
Well, first of all, I guess I was expecting like more conversation around this thing. I think there was originally, it sounds like you went and spoke with them based on what you were saying. It sounded like there, there may be an opportunity to just bring it back to one home on this property, which probably made more, most sense out of the whole thing based on that, on the drainage concern. I, you know, I'm not in favor of this. I don't see, you know, based on, you know, what I've heard and I haven't heard anything different that would change my mind on this one here. You know, and I feel like if there's really going to be any work done, if this thing was to be deferred, it may give you additional time maybe to come up with something else. But again, at this time right now, I just, I, you know, again, I, I don't see where I am in favor of this based on the circumstances.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much know the area and I'm telling you, there's nowhere for the water to go. I mean, that's the situation that not only there, but bridge water also. I mean, it's always been the issue. I mean, it can't carry the amount of water to flat ground. It's some of the worst blackjack that, that we got in the county.
I'm leaning toward, I think that maybe we should defer because you just mentioned about one of the gentlemen might consider selling some extra land or something to get it, get the development further away from his septic tank. And I mean, we just had a whole conversation last time on the fact that when a developer comes in, in an area that is prone to flooding and you put more houses and you've got more concrete going on this land where it can't drain properly, that pushes the water onto the neighbors. And I know you don't want that to happen. I know they don't want it to happen. And so that is, and I, I am really going to be honest, I'm not exactly sure why planning did, I mean, I would like to see some information from planning as to why they thought this was a good idea. And then I'm curious why the planning, the planning council approved it also. Because, I mean, it, to me, it's sort of a cut and dried situation, but I'm willing to listen. I really am. And if there is people that can come and give a presentation as far as how this water can be redone, you know, and new set, a new system in place that nobody's ever heard about, well, maybe that's something for the whole county. Because we've got a lot of other areas that are faced with these same situations. But, but right now, unless we can get some more information, I'm, I'm not thrilled.
Well, watch this, he's going to hold up a second. When we're rezoning property, rezoning doesn't come with a plan to address water. That is not the picking order to do a rezoning. Am I correct, Jonathan? When you rezonate property, there's nothing, we've never asked, show us a plan before we rezonate. We can't start that now. I understand your concern about water, but the rezoning we just did, the one in front of this, there's no plan. It's just a rezoning. Those type of plans come at the next phase. I made that clear when we talked about the septic system. I made that clear when we talked about the runoff of the property. This is not the point that you asked for. Our process doesn't call for a plan for septic. It doesn't call for a plan for runoff. This council is here to decide rezoning. It's planning's duty when the plans are submitted to approve, yes, this works, no, this doesn't work. This is not for us. And whether it's the worst blackjack in the county, blackjack is blackjack, but there are ways to build on blackjack. There are ways to build in a flood plain. This is not in a flood plain. So you don't ask for those plans at this juncture. It's wrong and maybe it's the greenest of council members who don't know what you asked for at this juncture, but I know what to ask for. We've never asked for that. So don't put that burden on a petitioner at this juncture. That comes later. There's nothing that you can do to change blackjack except put a engineered system on it. And if some of the houses in the area right now could go back, they would put an engineered septic system. And maybe they wouldn't have And maybe they wouldn't have problems that they're having now. But I'm here to tell Tommy, Debbie, and Tom, this is not the juncture to ask for what you're asking for. It's not, we're doing a disservice if we say, we're not going to rezonate until you give us a water runoff plan. Not for a rezoning, we can't ask for that. It'd be partiality to ask him for it and didn't ask the last twenty, thirty people who came for rezoning. This is not the juncture. And I will tell this council, if we start making precedent outside of what the rules are, but you can't, I'm not discounting the neighbors' concerns. I sit here on the record, staff is here, I've taken every concern that the neighbors have brought. Got an answer. I've done my job. There's nothing that says, don't allow this to move forward. When I first met with the property owners out there in the area, one gentleman said, oh, he's just going to storm through, he's some big time developer. He's not a big time developer. Three houses is not going to change the case. And I've said on the record, and even I spoke with Jonathan before the meeting, even if we approved three lots, there's no guarantee that three will fit, given the setbacks, away from the creek that runs through the property, away from the well and septic. So I think we're asking the wrong questions at this juncture. And I beg this council to allow this to go to the next step, and allow these neighbors, if they want to meet again, the developer shaking his head like he'll meet, I'll meet.
No, we're done with public comment.
So I'm saying to my council, my colleagues, that the information I've shared with the developer, the neighbors, what staff has said, it says this is a yes. And we can't ask for things that are outside of what the process calls for right now. Vote it up or down, however you want to do it, but I'll tell you what, this rezoning should be moved to the next phase. Continue the conversation. We've always respected that council member's district. And I don't think tonight will be the best night to start going against what the council members wish. And it may not pass third reading. But I can tell you, unless something comes up that says no, I think we should give it the opportunity to move forward.
Any other discussion?
Yes, very quickly. So Councilman Roddy, I'd ask that you not hold my youth against me. I'll say this to begin, I think it's helpful for us to have conversation like this because it's very difficult, and all the hours we put into county council, to get with each other one-on-one to talk about things we think the rest need to hear and we need to discuss. So appreciate the discussion. I came into the meeting tonight prepared to not support this. And my reasoning was, I didn't know there were other properties in the area that were of the same size. So Jonathan, you mentioned there were nine properties within a thousand feet of this property. And what's, do you have a list of what those sizes are? Not to necessarily hand out tonight, but...
Yeah, I can provide additional information after the meeting. But just from looking at the map right now, there are those nine parcels, and they range in between one acre and two acres within a thousand feet of the subject.
All right, follow-up question. When were they rezoned to allow the one and two acre lots?
So they are all AGC, so they are all non-conforming in size today. Because the minimum lot size for AGC is five acres.
So they existed, obviously, it's all AGC. Okay, that answers that question, okay.
You hear the comments?
Yeah, nothing else.
Okay. I fully, we do have, this is in no way a slight to Mr. Roddy, this is clearly his district, but I haven't heard anything tonight that suggests that a further meeting will change anything, or that there's interest to, that that will change. Really, the way that I look at this, and this property is close to a dividing line for me, so I can't support the motion. And it's simply because the way that I view this, developer purchases the property literally a month or so before he pursues rezoning, but knowing at that time that you could only put one house to the 3.98 acres. And I do think that that bears some consideration because what is being requested is that it be three times allowed, three times the density that is allowed by right. And that's just something that I've consistently voted against, especially when it comes to the area, the Blackjack area, that I just don't see any way to mitigate that. While there are some parcels that are similar sizes, it is completely surrounded by AGC parcels. And there are older parcels, typically the ones that have been owned, I think, by families that divided it up, where they had five acres that would split it into two, and that's how those work. I do think that there's real potential for that to spread. And that's just a philosophy that I've taken, and this is close to that line. I don't see any way to fix that. If you're doing three times what you're allowed by right, I just don't think that that fits there, especially with the concerns that I've gone and taken a look at, so I can't support it tonight. The motion on the table is to approve second reading. All those in favor say aye. Can you raise your hand so I can see?
To approve?
Yes.
Second reading?
Yes. All is opposed?
Opposed.
No. Motion to approve is denied. Do we need to have a motion to deny, or is it...
Based on custom practice, yes, a safer course would be denied and definitively if that's council's wishes.
Do we have a motion?
Can you repeat that again, please?
Certainly, based on custom and practice of votes before the bodies of the county, a vote to, a motion to approve that fails does not by implication result in a denial. So if council wishes to deny the motion, the better course of action would be to have that motion definitively.
Motion to deny?
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Oh yeah, there's some discussion. Oh yeah, there's some discussion. When we start throwing out the facts and interjecting feelings and emotions, obviously, every rezoning has someone comes and speaks for it, speaks against it. Yes, we heard several people come speak against it. But I'm the one that doesn't throw out the baby with the bathwater. The facts are, all the concerns of the neighbors will be addressed in some kind of plan coming forward, from a well and septic system, from a runoff plan, stormwater plan. When you throw that all out and say, let's just forget about that, let's just deny it. And when you hear the fact that three homes may not even fit the property, if you divide it in three lots, that determination would have come when the setbacks came into play, the lot gets cleared off, you establish where the well and septic's are on adjacent properties. And you say, no, we're not going to even let it get to that point. Two homes may not fit because of the creek or ravine that runs through it, adjacent well and septic. We don't know. And so we're voting against something that would possibly allow three, maybe only allow one.
Can I say so?
No, you can't. So what I always say is consider the facts, that the facts speak for themselves. I've always done it that way. And I knew coming in tonight, it wasn't going to pass because some of the preliminary conversation. It would have been easy to come in and say, let's just deny. But I have my principles of how I do things, and some people have their principles of why they do other things. I feel like I did the right thing to support the facts and not go on rhetoric, speculation. And I'll say it, if I had to vote again for it, I would vote on the facts. Not who it involves, not who it affects, but on paper. We get things all the time that the planning commission says yes, staff says no. We have to make a decision, one way or another at that point. When the planning commission says yes, staff says yes, it fits the comp plan, and we say no, we got a problem. That means we didn't look at the facts. We didn't look at the facts. And I hate it for this gentleman, and I even hate it for the neighbors, because we're using this to set bad precedent. So every time staff says yes, planning commission says yes, the comp plan says yes, 99.9% we've said yes. Tonight is that .01%. And it's a bad feeling when it's your district. Because now, when campaign time comes around, the six of you need to campaign in my district because you're making decisions for my district. We all need each other's support. We all have voted to represent our constituents based on the facts. And I can look every one of the neighbors in the eye and say, I address your concern. The facts said this should have been a yes. You may hate me for the vote, but I hope you respect me for the principles that I have sitting up here. Because I will lean on them every single time. Because if you was the petitioner looking to rezonate, and the same facts were on the table, I would say the same thing. So it's this gentleman's day, it may be you tomorrow that you're going to want me and want this council to vote on the principles and vote on the facts. But tonight, we didn't vote on the facts. We let some other things come into play. I worked with one of the neighbors. I know some of the neighbors. But I can look each one of them in the eye and say, this was the right thing to do, even though it failed. And I felt that coming into this meeting. But I only have to vote my conscience and how I sleep at night, how I wake up in the morning, how I look in the mirror. I never met this gentleman before, until he put this rezoning on the table. So you can't say I was voting for it for any special interest. He's never been to a meeting before. But I can look him in the eye and say, I feel like I've done a service to you, and I feel like I've done a service to the neighbor, because I took every single concern to staff and got an answer that will get addressed, that will get addressed. So I say that to say this, we've set in bad precedence when we're voting against district representatives. We're voting ahead of what's to come in the form of addressing even issues. How can you say no when you don't know what the plan looks like for stormwater that would possibly leave the property? It's not up to us to figure out how he's going to deal with the water. It's up to him and his engineers, and his builders, and his contractors. So we need to get it together up here. And I know I mentioned about some of us being new to the process. Yeah, we've got some learning to do. You don't have to answer to me, but I hope when you look in the mirror, it fits what it shows. Because tonight, it showed a disgrace to how we voted and did a disservice. And I think I'm finished.
I'll share very quickly, I take exception to what you're saying.
Well, you can take exception all you want.
Let's not argue back and forth. We'll give each council member, Mr. Roddy, let's give each council member a chance to speak if they want to speak.
And the reason I take exception is that the decision we make tonight, and if I'm wrong, Jonathan, correct me, would be setting precedent, actually. Because what you said a minute ago, that land that was already there was there. Council didn't rezone anything, unless you can tell me differently, that allowed someone to build a house on a one acre, one and a half acre land. They had it built when it was AGC, correct? Or it was subdivided as AGC. And so we would be, this would be the first action of council in that area to change the zoning, which would allow more of this in the area. And what I'm hearing is, the area doesn't want that. I know the comp plan calls for it. I know that it's approved by planning commission and staff. But this would be setting precedent, I think. And if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong.
Let me address that, Mr. Huckabee. I think, I'm reluctant to say it sets a precedent. I think we take the action based on what's before us. And you may be correct that this first rezoning of this type in that immediate vicinity, I don't know. But I think, you know, when I ask what this has, impact this has on precedent, so I didn't maybe refer that to our legal counsel. But I don't think I'm capable, or Jonathan's capable, of establishing whether this sets a precedent.
Right, so my point is, though, I don't think there's been any rezoning of this type in that area as to date. This will be the first. But I, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Well, I can most definitely tell you, because I know most all the farmers in the area that work down there. And there's nowhere, and you can have whoever you want to come in, there's nowhere for water to go there. It's flat ground, it has nowhere to go.
Yeah, and, you know, this is a good, I think this has been a really good discussion. I mean, overall, I think this is what it's all about. You're kind of seeing the sausage be made here, folks, you know, in regards to these things. You know, as a person from, as your district, I 100% respect your thoughts and where you stand. And again, bump, you know, when we look at things like this, and we talked about a deferral, and I mentioned a deferral earlier, your decision to move forward with the vote was your decision, okay? But I think that when we are, we are looking at something like this, our goal is to stand for what we believe in and what we see in this. And we feel like this is not an appropriate property to build what they're looking to build.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two. Moving now to item number three, rezoning action considered second reading, 24-06, tax map number 279000004, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 4.46 acre portion of a 70.52 acre parcel in District 2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. So this is similar in some ways and very opposite in some ways than the case just before this. But I rode over and looked around this area, and the neighbors are in favor. Again, we're going from AGC to RUD, which is not something that makes me feel good. And we've had so many, so many larger parcels, you know, having corners cut off and things like that, that I do think it waters down AGC, and I've said that many times. It's a big concern of mine. But I rode over and I looked, and I feel like, just because the residences that are adjacent to this are not on the same road frontage, I'm okay with this. I feel like I'm going to be able to sleep at night if we rezonate this. You know, the planning commission was not in favor, and staff is not in favor. I worked really hard on my comprehensive land use plan, and had this come up during that time, I probably would have said, you know, this is an iffy. Most everything in my comp plan, I'm pretty dead set on. But in this case, I do think it's a little iffy, just simply because of what's adjacent, what's already adjacent to it. So, and I've already told Mr. Boyd that, you know, when we come back to look at that bigger parcel there, we might have a different conversation. But for now, I think this is an okay thing to do in Cloverton area.
Any other discussion?
Yes. So as we're looking at this, and I support it, I supported it the last time, I'll support it this time because the district representative wants us to support it. Staff says no, don't do it. Planning commission says, no, don't do it. The comp plan 2035 says, no, don't do it. District representative says, I'm fine with it, I think it's doable, let's do it. Now, all seven of us are going to vote for it. In her district, she wants it, I support it. Because she knows what's best in her district. So on one hand, we take a rezoning that says yes, yes, and another yes, this council says no. Next item up for bid says no, 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 we're going to vote for it. That's what we're doing up here. That's when I talk about things not being right, when you say no in somebody else's district, and you go against the three that says yes. I support this rezoning because the district representative says, I've talked, I've evaluated the facts. This should be a go. And I'm going to support it. But I wish other council members that sit miles away would listen, not to this council member, not just the one that sits to her immediate right, but listen to the one that sits to the left sometimes. Because we all have agendas, apparently, and we're all up here doing what we want to do. But when you throw out the facts, you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. I just wanted to point the disparity out on how things are viewed by my colleagues. And yeah, I'm on one tonight. And yeah, I'm on one tonight, because she did a disservice, and I won't let you forget it.
I want to add one more thing, just one more thing.
Are you insinuating that towards me?
If the shoe fits, Tommy, wear it.
I just, I just want to say one more thing.
I, I think that's enough.
But you asked a question. I answered it. I'm not afraid to answer it.
Well, let it go.
Come on now. I didn't call your name.
So.
Hey.
I didn't call your name, Tommy.
I think there's one, these boy scouts are sitting here tonight, like, "Look, they're leaving." I mean, come on, y'all. So let's be, let's be the role models that they came to see tonight. Now, they're going to get their friends. They say, "Go on back. Y'all got to see this." So I want to just say this, because I chaired the zoning committee for a few years, and I'm on the zoning committee still. One thing that I think is very important for this council to do is to, to look at our, and, you know, Councilwoman Debbie and Councilman Bump over here, they're, they're on that now also. But I think one thing that's very important is, when we have things that we feel like could happen that might not be the right thing, and I'm going back to this, this discussion prior to this, the current one, but when we feel like there might be things that would be allowed to do after the fact, after we've approved something, and this gets on down the road, and developers looking, and, and we, we think we might not like what he will be doing, or we feel like, you know, there might not be enough mitigation, we need to consider those things right now countywide. We need to, we need to put policy in place that protects everybody from those things, because I know there are people in this room tonight, sitting here, that are fearful of what, what could happen on, on that parcel. And, and I feel like what we need is not, not just Councilman Roddy saying, "Hey, I've talked to the neighbors and I've talked to the planning department." We need things in place that we can all, as a council, bank on. So that's our job. That's what we're elected to do, that and keep taxes low. But let's, let's just think about that going forward, and, and, and we'll have some more discussion about that. That I think is going to be, is going to be important. You know, for now, we're, let's, let's get back to the rezoning in District Two and get that done. We can.
Any other discussion? On this particular rezoning, there weren't, there are no flooding issues, and this was a close issue for the planning commission as well. I will support this for those reasons. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Rezoning action considered second reading, case number twenty-four dash zero nine, tax map number four three zero 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 one five, to rezone from AGC to RUD, four point eight four acre portion, portion of a nine point eight four acre parcel in District Five.
Motion to approve with deed restriction in map not, notation inland for us to reflect deed restriction property.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I would ask, there was some discussions, some folks, this is one of the things where I think the community did pull together and, and reached out. I spoke with folks on both sides of this, understand that they support the one acre parcel, the one parcel on the four point eight four acre lot, and that it be deed restricted for only one lot, and that the map reflect, Mr. Husbyth, I think we talked about this previously, but that the map reflects some kind of hatching, so that now that council is aware of a deed restricted parcel that that's listed on there. I think some of the concerns that I know we're hearing from folks is that if there's no way to fix it, then having that RUD then leads to a, a potential, certainly it, it makes recommendations different from staff, and it sometimes is not noted when it goes to planning commission that that was had. So if there's, if there's a way to note that on the map, I think that would be important as well. Did you say that there was an ability to do that?
Well, I, I think, you know, the map, the zoning map is the official zoning map, and it's going to need to reflect what the underlying zoning is on the property. I do think there are times when we put restrictive covenants that affect land use, and there is a need to somehow designate that those restrictions are in place. I don't know that I have a solution for how we would do that, but there, when you do add restrictions that are over, or like a restriction, a condition on a zoning or something like that, there needs to be some notation. I don't know if, how we would do that with a deed restriction, or how comprehensive those would be. I mean, a lot, there are any number of properties that contain deed restrictions for any number of reasons. I don't know that all of those are directly related to zoning or, or density. So I, I guess I would just like to say, give us an opportunity to evaluate that piece of.
I think it's just important for folks, especially when they're looking at the map, to understand and to see that, especially when it's on staff. Staff is, is aware of the fact that it is not four eight, four parcels, an RUD four eight four parcels. So somehow, noting it on the map and making sure that when staff makes their recommendations, now that they're on notice of a potential deed restriction, that, that certainly is different than it being RUD that allows four, four lots.
I just don't know if there's a way to depict that on the map.
Isn't it just a matter of policy, of, of reflecting it on the map?
There's tons of deed restrictions on properties throughout the county, and we don't always know what those are.
No, I, I, it would need to be prospective. I mean, I don't think we can ask you to go back and do those, but I think if, if the motion, what we're, what we're asking to do is to make sure that, that staff, once they become aware of, of a deed restriction existing, that it be reflected on the map, so that, so that recommendations are made consistent with that.
I would say, like, in this case, where the council has made that part of the motion, that there's an acknowledgement, there's a deed restriction that relates to density or something like that, we could look at how we might do that, but I don't know that I have a solution for you tonight.
Okay. Mr. Roddy?
Maybe if we put some kind of asterisk that says, "See deed restricted."
I think, I, I think that's, that's helpful when you reflect that.
And that would direct whoever's looking at it, say, "Hey, I wonder what's this about?" Then they go pour the deed, then they have see the deed restriction.
Exactly.
Is it Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I want to say congratulations. I was hopeful and prayerful for you and your family to be able to do your, follow through on your wishes to build these homes and bring your family down. So I was, I was glad to see that presentation that, that you guys made two weeks ago of your intentions, and it was good to see your neighbors, obviously, since the last meeting, have kind of come together and say, "Hey, this is doable. It's not going to terribly change the neighborhood. It's not going to impact us in such a way that's going to be negative." So congratulations. I hope everything works out for you.
Quick clarification. So nine point eight four acres is the total size of the parcel, right?
Yes, sir.
And sixteen tenths of an acre was lost when he bought the property, and included a portion of the road, which he picked up that acreage, and it rounded out to ten. Is that correct?
So no acreage was lost. So, and I verified this in the old code as well, that the definition for lot area specifically states that it does not include the area within road right-of-way. So whatever the deed might say, however, the lot area is measured so that it satisfies the minimum lot, the minimum lot area requirement for each zoning district excludes the right-of-way.
But when he bought the property, didn't it include the road, half of the road in front of the property?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, regardless of the total number of acres that are listed on the deed when he purchased the property, the way that lot area is calculated, both before and after the code change, excludes the right-of-way. So.
Correct.
That's, that's how you calculate it. That's not related to what the acreage is listed on the deed.
So the questions I've asked outside of our last meeting, this meeting, was, it's too difficult to grandfather people in that are going to be unintentionally affected by a change in an ordinance. So in this case, there's an unintentional effect to this gentleman. When he bought the land, he had enough. He had ten acres, and as a result of a change in an ordinance, he ended up with less. No, that's not the case?
The ordinance has not changed, Mr. Huckabee. The ordinance has not changed.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, it's always been that it's calculated, and what we, the calculation we use to determine whether they have enough property is calculated based on the amount of property they have outside of the roadway right-of-way. That's always been the case. His deed, as Jonathan said, may show that he has ten acres, but we're not concerned with what the deed says. We're concerned with the zoning code says for how you calculate how big his buildable area is. So that's why it's the same before. It's probably been that way since we adopted zoning. So, I mean, that may be the case.
So is it, is it a fact that we're sixteen tenths of an acre away from having enough to divide this properly, five acres and five acres?
Yeah. Okay.
That is true.
Thank you.
So I do have a quick question on that, though, but I thought you, based on our last discussion, there was something in the recode that drove this.
So what you're referring to, and this is part of me following up and researching it, so I verified that the lot area calculation did not change. What did change was a clarification in the batch one of recode amendments to clarify that setbacks for buildings are measured from the right-of-way line and not a property line that might be depicted inside of the right-of-way.
So in this case, it, it was identified that the property was not affected by the change in, in recode.
So the, the only difference, and, and again, that was a clarification, because some folks in the development community were arguing, "Well, if I need a twenty-foot setback, and my property line on my deed extends fifteen feet into the right-of-way, well, I can build a structure five feet from the road," that's some of the arguments that were being made. So council adopted that change to clarify that it's, when you are talking about setback, it is from the right-of-way and not a property line, which some property lines end at the right-of-way, some deeds, as we're discussing now, extend into the right-of-way.
So, okay, I just want, all right, I just want to make sure I'm clear, though. This recode, though, component, did it actually lower the size of his?
No, sir. It did not.
So there was no difference?
There is no difference before and after recode. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
But he did start with fifteen acres.
He purchased a larger property and has already subdivided one parcel off of it.
He, he still owns fifteen acres if he purchased fifteen acres, correct?
Correct.
But the amount of how we calculate the size of his lot for building purposes has always been the same as well. So he still owns the fifteen acres, but for calculation purposes.
I, I, I guess I'm, at our, at our last meeting, though, there was mention. I'm not quite, I'm not quite, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I still have questions on this, and we can move on, and we can talk more about it, but I just.
I would, I would like to have the, the specific place in recode, that, if you could send that to council and let us take a look at it to see if that's something that needs to be reviewed or.
To which are you referring? Because?
Whatever it is that has put us in this situation.
Nothing has put us in this.
Fifteen acres.
Ma'am, ma'am, nothing has put us in this situation. The code did not change to.
Well, I'm not saying that the code didn't change. I want to know where in the code it makes that calculation.
Okay. I can send that to you.
Any other discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to actually item number two in consent that was pulled out. Counsel to amend and provide second reading of an ordinance to amend chapter thirty-three, sections thirty-three point oh seven oh longevity and thirty-three point oh seven one, annual leave of the York County Code of Ordinances to adjust the policies and procedures related to the accrual of longevity allowances and annual leave for county employees, so as to prospectively account for qualifying service with federal, state, and local government entities, and to account for qualifying military service and other qualifying non-governmental service, to specify the measures and basis for the accrual, service time, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. So at the last meeting, I did not have time to read through virtually anything. I had forty-five minutes to read through our agenda items, and as you know, there are hundreds of pages if you read the attachments. When I got to this one, I read through it, and I had some questions. So I want to run through those with you very quickly. In the, in the first two paragraphs of what we've been asked to do, we've been asked to take out continuous public service, which I'm in favor of that. And the reason I'm in favor of that is, this, this ordinance was drafted originally in nineteen eighty-four, and the last time it was revised, from what I can tell, is two thousand eighteen, before COVID. It's, it's my opinion that since COVID, most definitely in the last couple of years, an employer has to pay someone coming to work from them a comparable wage to what private or public is paying them. Therefore, I believe, number one, that when we're recruiting somebody, if they have four weeks of vacation from their prior employer, but yet they come to us, and we don't give them credit for continuous service, they may not get the four weeks, and you may not hire them. So I believe that taking out continuous public service makes sense. I think it makes sense specifically for the solicitor's office and the sheriff's office in particular. Also think that it makes sense to involve and include federal government and military service, because I think that gives us a bit of an advantage when we're out trying to hire individuals for different positions within the county. There's one piece that I want you to think about as we get into longevity. So I would say that it may, it may make sense to grandfather in all current employees into the longevity rule. And I know, when I looked at this originally, I thought, twenty dollars a month times twelve months. It's not, it's not a ton of money. In each category, it goes up, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty. And there's, in your packet, there's this, there's a graph in there. So I, I'm of the belief that when we go to hire people today, people that we hire are looking for as much money as they can get in their paychecks. And I think that if we grandfathered our current employees into the longevity allowance, so allow them to have this, obviously, we would grandfather them in, just like prior councils did with health insurance for the county, then future employees wouldn't be expecting this. They just want a competitive wage offered to them as it would be in the public or private sector. I estimated that this particular benefit costs the county about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. And I'm not making the case that we need to save taxpayers' dollars. I'm simply saying that I'm not as confident that this is a retention tool, and I don't think it's important. It's paying someone that's coming to work for us the wage they're asking for, so that we can hire them, which means that probably it's going to be higher than what they were earning before somewhere else. I might be wrong, though. So that was one point I wanted to share. One other point, as we go through this, there's a provision that every employee that works for the county can bank up to three hundred and sixty hours of annual leave. So three hundred and sixty hours, so if you work here for three years and you don't take any vacation, you will accumulate three hundred and sixty hours of annual leave. So once you accumulate three hundred and sixty hours, if an employee turns in a two-week notice to the county, then we're going to pay them three hundred and sixty hours times their hourly wage, as long as they give us a two-weeks notice. I believe we should grandfather our current employees into this provision, but I would suggest that we not offer this to new employees for many reasons. In the private sector, there are many employers that have a use or lose it clause. So you can have up to three hundred and sixty hours, but the employer is not going to pay you up to three sixty. And by the way, you can accumulate a lot of weeks here with the county, significant amount of weeks here with the county. I'm simply saying that we might ought to reconsider not paying out the three hundred and sixty hours to an employee. Let me give you an example. If one of our staff holds a significant position here in the county, and they leave the county, we could be paying that employee thirty thousand dollars or so. If they're earning around a hundred thousand dollars a year, we could be writing a check, a significant check for them to buy them out of their vacation. If you're ever, if you've ever been an employer that owns a business, and when you lose an employee, then you know what it's like to have to, first of all, bless you. If you've got to replace that employee, it takes time away from staff members to go out and begin to recruit and interview and hope you find a good candidate. It's a real inconvenience. So I'm saying grandfather in the employees that we have at up to three hundred and sixty hours. If they were to leave the county, they would get their due. But any new employee coming in, I question whether this is a benefit that we should continue to offer to a new employee. And I estimate this costs us about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year. And I can give you the math on that.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So are you saying that an employee can bank three hundred and something hours, say, and not use it from year to year? That, in other words, they, I mean, are you saying they can accumulate that many? Like, for example, my employee.
Like, for example, my employees, they have to use their vacation while they're working. However, if somebody quits or somebody gets let go, they do get that, if they've earned that vacation time, they get that vacation time. So if they've got two weeks and they, you know, they got two weeks this year and they leave in July, they're going to get a last check and they're going to get two weeks on top of that. But you're saying 360-something days?
360 hours.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. 360 hours, and they don't, and you're saying they can bank that over multiple years?
So what happens is, what you're voting on tonight is, an employee that comes to work here and works up to nine years, they're going to get 10 hours for every month they work or 120 hours by the end of the year, which is 15 days. So three years later, they will have earned 45 days of vacation, and if they didn't use any vacation in the first three years, they have 360 hours. So they could theoretically leave us, an employee earning $25 an hour could leave us and we're going to write them a $9,000 check in year four. Yes. You accumulate 10, 10?
Hours a month.
Hours a month for 12 months is 120. So at the end of three years, you have accumulated 360 hours. That's a good thing. I'm not saying take away that. I'm saying grandfather in our employees, and you really, believe me, because I recused myself in the last meeting, I've gone through and read through this, I've had conversations with different members of county staff, I've got a pretty good grasp of what this is, and it's a lot to absorb. So, and I got a little more I want to go through. Look at it this way, we have 1,250 employees at the county. If, if we have 10% turnover, so you have 120 people that turnover with the county a year, which we do, our turnover rate's about 10%, so we lose 120 people a year. If 15% of those qualify for 360 hours of payout, that's 18 employees, and if we average $25 an hour, that's $162,000 we're paying out to employees. They're leaving us to go somewhere else. And then you even think through this and you think, well, what if somebody retires? Well, a lot of people don't, they may retire from here, but they're going somewhere else to work part-time, maybe even full-time. I'm just saying in today's climate, you hire an employee, they have an expectation for you to pay them probably more than they were earning somewhere else in order to get them to come to work for you. So those two things, I think, the longevity piece, maybe we ought to consider grandfathering our current staff in, but don't offer it to new hired employees. The annual leave piece, grandfather our current employees in, not offer it to new employees. It's about a half a million dollars we're investing in those two programs, and I'm not sure, especially the second one, the 360 hours, that really doesn't help the county, because any employee can leave at any time to get a check, significant check, depending on what you're earning.
So are both parts of that, part of this, what we're voting on?
Yes. Well, no. I'm suggesting that you consider, and I don't want to hold up the first part of this provision
That's what I'm wondering.
For the benefit of the sheriff's department, solicitor's office, and maybe other departments here with the county, but I'm saying I think this is something to dig into and think about.
I'm interested in what you have to say, but I think we should stick to what's here and vote on that, and then however this comes back up for a discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I think they're intertwined.
Right.
Is there a way to?
Well, if you can let me finish, I'm almost done. So there's also another provision here that says that the county manager would have sole discretion over this. So again, it's amazing when you have conversation with different people, you think about things differently. So I would suggest that the department director, the department director would be hiring someone, and that person saying, well, I've had service in the military and I worked for the federal government, whatever, whatever. You got to validate that somehow, right? And it's not easy to validate, right? So the department director would need to intake that information, and in my opinion, they would take it to HR and they would try to validate this. And if they validate, somebody has 33 years of experience, non-continuous, right? Then it goes to, as a recommendation to the county manager to approve or disapprove what the director and HR has said meets our ordinance, instead of it just being the county manager. Just a suggestion that you consider that language. Last thing, well, not the last, second to last, we're looking to change the hours from, if you're a zero, first day employee through nine years, we're changing it from eight to 10, we're changing 10 to 19 to 10 to 12, and then we're changing 20 or more from 12 to 14. Really, you got to dig into this to absorb this, but employees can have a lot of weeks built up. Now, they can't, they can't, they can't get the payout but on 360, but they can have 1,000 hours, or they could have 100 weeks of vacation accumulated, and they could also have up to 1,440 hours of sick leave in addition to the vacation and annual leave. So I'm not sure why we're thinking about changing it from eight to 10 and 10 to 12 and 12 to 14, because you accumulate so much anyway. Average person uses 20 days of vacation a year. Now, I think since COVID, we've encouraged people to use more vacation, especially at the sheriff's department, that's the sheriff was here a minute ago, especially at the sheriff's department, they need to take their vacation for sanity purposes and encourages them to. So I'm not suggesting we take away anything except for we grandfather in longevity, grandfather in the 360 payout, but we don't offer it to new employees. As you dig into it a little further, there was one other mention of offering this benefit to, what was it, the election commission, poll workers. Poll managers and poll workers qualify for this benefit as well. I don't know if y'all have even seen that, if you think that's something that should be in or not, that's up for discussion too. Now, I'll go back to what Councilwoman Love said. I don't want to hold up this because I think this helps the county hire people. The first section of this, I think, is very important. Personally, I think we need to talk through these other sections.
So when this came out of finance, the goal was here to give a further assistance to the sheriff's office in essence, and allowing them to have more levity as far as bringing in more employees or whatever it may be. It just, to me, I think it's grown since that conversation, based on what came out of our meeting. I think that we need to put some, I feel like we need to put some guardrails here on this. I think the sheriff and what they're going to, what we can do for them is critically important, but I think there needs to be more discussion around the rest of what this, because this got much larger than I think what we expected coming out of finance, at least from my eyes, so.
Ma'am?
Mr. O'Neil.
I love our sheriff, I love HR, I love planning, I love the voter registration, I love the janitors that work here. We can't just start saying, let's do it just for the sheriff's department and leave HR out, leave accounting out, registration and deeds. When we give raises, we give them to everybody. When we give vacation time, we give it to everybody. This helps with recruiting for the sheriff's department, this helps with recruiting for the planning department, this helps with recruiting for everybody. Let's don't just start picking off the tree of what we want and what we don't want, leave on the tree. I think it's a bad precedent to even go down that particular road. When you start looking at the longevity bonus, as some people would call it, a longevity pay, some employees may get 20 bucks a month. I pulled out my calculator last week, like doing numbers. Somebody who gets 20 bucks a month, works five days a week, four weeks a month, 160 hours, we're talking about 12 cents an hour of taking that away from an employee. Don't seem like much. May buy lunch for a day, two days a month, but in a time where we're seeing groceries increase, gas increase, daycare increase, how dare we sit up here and talk about taking money off someone's paycheck? How dare we sit up here saying that if you accrue four weeks, five weeks, six weeks vacation time and you decide to leave for a better opportunity, you don't get to get that payout for what you earned? We're not just giving it to people because we like them. We have these programs set up because they work here, they provide a service for us, and they earn their vacations. Company I work for, I get six weeks vacation. If I decide to leave in the middle of the year, I'm getting paid for those vacations. I've earned those vacations. They didn't give them to me just because I'm bump riding. We're not going to give them to an employee just because they, hey, you got two kids, a family, you want to go on vacation? If you earn something with us through a program that we have established, and maybe we need to look at not allowing people to carry over so many hours and limit that, that's probably a better conversation to have, but I think that's set for a reason. I think we follow, do we not follow some state guidelines about how many hours that someone can carry, where do we get that guideline from?
States is 360 as well.
States is 360. So how dare we touch that? But if I've earned the vacation time, this county is going to pay it, whether they pay it this week, in the next nine weeks that I'm here, or they pay it when I leave. They, people have earned it, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, and I know that's not on here, some things that was discussed, not only, but if we're giving people that 20 bucks a month, 30 bucks a month, and do we not have a cap on what that longevity allowance is? And that cap is what?
At the top tier?
But my point is, and Watts and I had this discussion earlier, this council, we've been picking some real good battles on things that don't move the needle, but you tell that employee, you're not going to get this 20 bucks this month, you're not going to get that 240 bucks this year.
Hold on a second, let me correct you right quick. That's not what I said.
No, I'm not saying what you said.
But I don't want, I don't want the public to call me tomorrow and email me tomorrow because they're listening to you, I want to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
Every employee with the county is grandfathered in to the longevity provision and the 360-hour payout. Grandfathered in, you get it. Any new employee, they don't even know we offered that. What they're asking for is a competitive check now. Pay me what I'm worth now. That's what people are demanding these days. And I'll say this very quickly, if you don't mind, give me 30 seconds, and I will say this, I wasn't going to say this, but I am going to say it. 10, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, when somebody came to work for the county, they came to work for the county and they took a little lesser wage because they were getting retiree health insurance coverage for the rest of their life, right? For themselves and their spouse. So there were benefits that were given to them that we've now not included for new employees. I personally think that's a good fiduciary decision for the county. I think the decision was a difficult decision, your own counsel in that decision was made, I think, the last time when it was pulled away, I think it was the right decision. And I think today is different than five years ago. People that come to work from the county, I don't care if you're an electrician, a plumber, you're an executive, whatever, everybody's going to, they're asking for a competitive wage to where they could work somewhere else. Doesn't matter. So to clarify, no employee here will be treated any differently. Any new employee, I'm saying we might ought to reconsider that.
So what happens when you got two people in an office, one at desk A and one at desk B, and one's getting a bigger paycheck, they're doing the same job, one's getting a bigger paycheck and the other one's waiting for what the current plan is? So if they compared their paychecks on a weekly basis, that new employee would be making more in the paycheck and the other employee would be having more vacation?
That's a real issue in our county. You'd have to ask those that do the hiring here how difficult that is when you have people that earn less than people that are coming to work.
No, I'm saying, but what you're proposing would create that. It would be, they would, two people in the same office doing the same job would be getting two different?
That's kind of like somebody that gets health insurance coverage and they're not even here anymore, right? Versus someone that comes in and doesn't have health insurance coverage.
Did y'all forget I was speaking? I know you did your 30 seconds.
I thought you were done.
Okay, no, I'm not. I'll go back and implement, yeah, Watts did speak about grandfathering people in. Fine and well, but grandfathering people in also means grandfathering certain people out, and it will create that dissension between employees working side by side and they look at that paycheck. I know don't too many people get paper checks now. Oh, I got an extra 25, 30 bucks on my check on this line, what did you get? Oh, I don't get that. It starts to create that inner-office comparison over time, because I'm getting it, she's not, she's getting it, I'm not. And it's so small. We're going to beat this up so bad, we're going to look so bad in the public for saying, hey, your county is cheating future employees out of 12 cents an hour in the future. We've done so much to dig our employees' morale out of the ditch these last many years I've been here. We are at a good point now that we pay our employees somewhat what I think they're worth. We've done that by giving raises annually. When I got on council, council hadn't given a raise to employees in almost four years. We haven't looked back since that time. We've made sure we've done things to take care of our employees, to make people want to consider coming here to work for us. We've gotten there. Now, if people are wanting to come work for us, do we start saying, hey, let's start scaling back a little bit from people who want to come work for us? We've heard from the sheriff's department, we've heard all across this county and many departments how recruit, we do things for current employees and we do things to help recruit also. This may be one of those little fine nuggets that's so small on somebody's paycheck, but I guarantee you, it means a lot to people nowadays.
No doubt.
And let's don't take that away. Let's don't go backwards on our benefits.
Well, I think we need to get this right. I think there's a lot of discussion. I'd recommend we defer this back to F and O for further discussion on this.
Ms., Chair, can I, I want to speak to one thing. Mr. Audet, you talked about this change of growing since we F and O. It has not, not at all. We went through with two changes. We're going to count applicable service and the extra two hours a month. That was it. These other things Mr. Huckabee's talking about are other things in the ordinance that have been here since the 1988, 1988, what was it, Sheriff told us in 1992, those were still in there. We haven't touched those. This has not grown, this has not changed since we took it through F and O. The two things management recommended to F and O, two extra hours a month for the employees for vacation, and you were handing out the same sheet that got emailed out today that showed our time compared to everybody else. We're in the middle of the pack on that, okay? In the low end, on the upper, sort of experienced employees, a little bit of low end, keeps us competitive on our vacation time. The other thing with continual service, everybody seems to agree that that's an important thing. These other areas that Cheryl are delving off to, if I can suggest, make a suggestion to refer those other topics to F and O, and also third thing I'm going to talk about, HR is, we've already developed a form for, to approve this, where HR is going to sign off on the hours, to verify those hours. That's the form that I put together. It was mentioned earlier today that some of the departments elected appointed officials, such as the sheriff, might want to be the deciding factor on that time. I don't think anybody on our management has a problem with that, but I just, the notion that we somehow grew it since we F and O is just completely incorrect. We asked for two changes, two very simple changes. These other things are outside of what we talked about, okay? They're a part of the entire ordinance, but this is something new to be evaluated, and what I'd ask council to do, if y'all want to evaluate that, send those particular items, the 360-hour accrual and the longevity pay that we struck, we talked about, we can refer those back to F and O if y'all would like, and we can do an analysis on that, on what the cost is of that, and actually get some real data to back that stuff up and have an educated discussion, F and O, on those items, which are, again, outside of the changes we're proposing in the ordinance tonight.
No, and again, Kevin, I do appreciate the conversation. I still think that there is, I think by bringing it back to F and O, I think we could talk through this and get everybody on the same page and understanding it. So again, I still would recommend, I appreciate that update though, but again, my recommendation would be to bring it back to F and O so we can make sure we're ironing this out.
You agree with Mr. Audet? Tommy, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree with Tom.
Why don't we do this? I mean, it does look like some of the changes that were made were to add the categories of how you classify that, but I think if there are this many questions that are coming up on the council, if we refer it back, if we refer it back to F and O to address the one issue, I know that there were some questions that were raised even by legal with the sheriff's department, is it best, should it be an objective standard instead of it being a discretionary one so that? standard instead of it being a discretionary one, so that folks know exactly who fits in that category and doesn't change with whoever's making that decision? I think that was a reasonable question to ask, is there a different way to analyze that? That's something I had a question about. It does expand the categories a little bit. But I, I would be in favor of referring that back, just to clarify some of these issues and, and I will say this, I am not in support at all of taking a benefit away from employees who have that, if there's an interest in looking prospectively as to whether or not the benefit is better to have. I think this council has worked very, very hard to support our employees. We've done reclassification, we've increased the salaries. I'm very proud that we've been able to do that, and I think that it has gone a long way to help us be competitive. We also increased the number of holidays, which is, which is significantly in line, if, if not a little bit more, and so with the vacation, if we want to take just a little bit more time, refer it back, make sure we get that right, answer any of the questions that staff has. Mr. Roddy, I think you made the motion, are you comfortable with, with the deferral to F and O or to, to answer some of these questions?
I concede to that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could make one more note that's on our chart. Several, several years ago, when we looked at, just speaking of the benefits that we wanted to start offering to our employees, we looked at the number of paid holidays this county was given. And many years ago, we saw that York County was a bottom tier on offering employees more paid holidays. We were pretty much slapped at the bottom to some of the smaller counties. And I'm glad to say that over the years, we've added at least three, maybe four more holidays, paid holidays.
Eleven paid holidays and three floaters.
We've added at least three to four. So we, we've done some of the grunt work to kind of get us in position to get top-tier employees coming to the county. So that's, that's definitely something that this council, management, staff, and everybody should definitely be proud of. We're putting the pieces in place to get top-tier people and keep top-tier people.
Agreed. So the motion is to defer back to F and O. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Please out and do business. Council to approve ratification of designating Keystone as the Act 301 Substance Abuse Authority for York County to cover the time period of October 1st, 2023 to October 1st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a committee report?
Okay. So we met Councilman Aldette, and Atkins and I met today and for the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Couple of things, you know, we're all getting, we're in, we're in budget season, we're there. And start with the, kind of the, the reality of things, and that is that inflation is definitely a factor in the upcoming budget. There are up to 50% increases in our service contracts, but this council's goal is to still have a budget with no tax increase. And one of the great things that this council did seven years ago, not necessarily this council, but three of us that were on this council, yes, three of us were on this, it was my first year on this council. And so we, 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 we had to, we had to make a hard decision to increase the debt millage and we, but, but that came with a promise, that came with a promise to the taxpayers that we would reduce that within seven years. So on April the 15th of this year, we will be reducing your millage 4.4, I think it's, was it 4.4? I've lost my little note here. Was it 4.4, Kevin? Erin, 4.4 mils, yes. Erin gave us the update today, thank you very much. So that's, that's a great thing, and hopefully that, that helps, that keeps a little more money in the, in the taxpayers' pockets. So we would maybe like to have a little, not necessarily a party, but a celebration, at least just let everybody know that we've kept our promise and that councils that, that have come along, council members that have come along since 2017 have stayed the course in order to keep us, and make, keep us on, on course to be, be prepared to do this for everybody tonight, well, on April 15th. We also approved the minutes from the March 4 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We did get a, a more full update from Erin, thank you Erin. And we also considered the allocation of funds from District 2 to the Bethel Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $2,400, and that was approved.
Thank you, ma'am. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Any council member knew knowledge in the comments?
Just to make one, one comment. So through economic development, we had talked about it before, but the, the goal is to develop a small business plan. And we're going to have, we're looking to do further meetings around there, and basically what we're looking to do is build like what we call four-legged stool, which would bring in SBDC, which is our small business program, the COG. We'd also be looking at bringing in possibly Gravity and possibly other organizations from within the area to help us look at what we call venture capital opportunities, look at market analysis, basically do Shark Tank events, et cetera. Again, we're looking at it, we're trying to bake through this opportunity, but we've got a lot of interest from the different groups. Chamber of Commerce would be involved in it also, and so more to come, but I do want to share that with the community.
Mr. Roddy.
I just want to share with, with council and people who may be watching this at a later replay. We've been getting some calls recently, I know we had some conversations about the tiny home situation. Part of it, we, during RECO, we were talking about looking to do some things to allow some tiny homes in the unincorporated areas. That has kind of fallen off the table. I want to kind of get back to those conversations about what can we do, whether it's a pilot-type program, if we have to do a different zoning classification, just want to put that on everybody's radar then. I've got some calls, obviously the cost of living, building costs, and things are going up, and we have yet to address anything that would fall in the affordable housing box, if you will, to at least see kind of what's out there, what council would think, how can we at least pilot something somewhere to offer those who want to do the tiny home living by choice, and those who pretty much in the financial range of that's all they can afford. I think we have kind of put this on the shelf, and I know municipalities have been against it, but we control what we have in our unincorporated areas, and so I would like that conversation, if it has to go to planning and zoning, to have those conversations, like to hear from staff, what we can do to tailor something, so that if someone had some property that they say, hey, you know, York County's working towards, or they pass something, hey, I have some nice acreage I'd like to, you know, offer up to be able to do it, and then have them come, kind of say, hey, I got 10, 15, 20, whatever that landmass is needed, to at least start to have the conversation, because the cost of continues to going up. And some people want to live in a tiny home by choice, but I can assure you, there's a lot more people out there who can basically only afford something of their own, something that they can come home to. Obviously, our homeless population is increasing. We do have, it is a thing called working poor, there's a thing called working homeless. Some homeless people have jobs, but they still can't afford a place to live, and I think this is definitely, should be on the radar of this council, because we are somewhat a forward-type-thinking community that tries to address some of the needs of everybody, and I think this is one that will go a long way. It may not materialize, but at least we can have the conversation embedded to see kind of what our, some of our options would be, if staff could, hope it's not falling on deaf ears.
Not at all.
So to kind of let us get back to some of those conversations, we've had them previously, but they've just fallen off the table, but I would like to see staff working on something, planning, zoning, working on something from a, from that standpoint, to see what can we come up with. So just wanted to kind of put that on the hearts and minds of everybody, and maybe some people out in the community attend some of the planning and zoning committee meetings, and may have some good solutions or good offerings that we can incorporate into what we're looking to do.
I agree 100%. I think that attainable affordable housing is something that we need to explore, we need to get staff engaged and other people in the community that have a passion for this and come back with a recommendation on what we need to do in order to respond to the needs of the citizens in this area that need an affordable place to live. And it comes in different forms, and that, that doesn't mean that the county is in a position where it has to pay for this, but we could put the structure in place so this can be successful. So I agree with you there. I had made a note very quickly, workshops, I brought this up a couple of times, but I'd like for us to consider some structure around our workshops that involve people that can come in and give us feedback. I'm not a developer, I'm not a, I'm not an economic developer, I'm none of this, I don't know a ton about public works, you know, there's a lot that none of us really know, but there are people in this community that know a whole lot more than we do, and I'd like to encourage inviting them into some of our discussions to educate us more on certain topics. So I would ask that council create some structure like we do here, you get two minutes at the beginning of the meeting, at the end, you can speak as long as you want, I'd like to revise that personally, but at workshops, I think we should have some of the same, that we can come away with a lot more information. So I don't know how the rest of council feels about that. I would support what you just said, I think that's important, it was in my top 10 list at a red off person meeting in January, so I agree with that. So I'd like to see workshops and more feedback. And then the other thing is, I've been thinking about this since we la, we left our meeting, and then we had the rain last week. I, I suggested a stormwater review of the Rambo Road area and Regent Park, but quite frankly, after talking to somebody else, I think we need a county-wide initiative to hire an engineering firm to do an evaluation of the entire county where we have problems. And what comes from that would be, what comes from that would be, is a report where our number one item that we need to address will be number one. Now, we don't know what that's going to cost, but we clearly know that Regent Park's flooding. And we probably know that the culverts that are in Regent Park aren't big enough, so we need to add two or three more culverts beside that one, or either take that out and widen it, because I think it's a 15-inch culvert, it can't pull the water out. But an engineering company can tell us exactly what we need to do or consider doing. Cost is an issue, obviously, but you got to know what the problem is first. So I'd like to suggest that we ask staff to initiate a county-wide stormwater, whatever you want to call it, floodplain, flood-prone area study, so we know what we need to be doing and begin planning towards some of these initiatives, so we can mitigate the problems that we have in certain areas of the county that are more important to address than others. Anyway, those are the three items I'd like to see us work on.
I, I just have a little quick note to my senior colleagues, right there, the three of you guys.
The great gentleman.
Yeah, you're the senior staff, okay.
The great gentleman.
So, I just want to thank you guys for the initiative that you took several years ago that has put the county into, at this point, has brought the county into a good financial situation, and I'm sure if we think that we have had some hard discussions these, this past year, I can only imagine, I think I'll go back and watch those, and get me a big bowl of popcorn and, and have at it, but I want to thank you guys, and I, I hope that the, our constituents see that this, this is a great day in York County, and, and thank you guys for your hard work.
One else? I do have a couple of things. We had a workshop, and a part of that we discovered, and I had some folks reach out to me to say that our ZBA is not met in three months, and I think the explanation that was given was that the code makes things more clear, and that that's the reason why it has, it had happened, which I'm sure there is, is full merit for. One of the things that I do think the ZBA does is it's, it allows us to build in some flexibility into the code, instead of things, things aren't always black and white. A couple of things that have come up in my district, I've brought them up a couple of times, but I would like to now formally ask that council take a look at them, are the home occupation exceptions. I've had several folks who, since the county takes the position that if you even store anything in your garage that you intend to sell later, that that converts you to a commercial use. I, I think that it would behoove us, I've had several folks who have moved their, their home occupation to make that a special exception, and then the community can say what, come out and, and speak to that. At a ZBA, it would be subject to conditions, but I think that would open up and give some flexibility to allow folks, especially who do small businesses, that's a way for us really to help them, because we've taken a very hard line that you can't do that, and that's not the way that it's been practiced before. People who have, who have worked out of their homes or who have business on their, their land, they're being told that they can't do that. I've also run across a couple of new instances where folks who have industrial property and they want to use it split-zoned and want to do something that's less onerous than industrial, that we don't allow that. I mean, it would seem to me that we would be okay with something that's less onerous going in there and at least allowing that as a special exception. I can't imagine that the community around that would have a problem with that, and it would at least build in some flexibility for someone who is not going to do something so much industrial level with something less than that, even if it's storage of vehicles. So I, I would ask the council to consider us looking at providing a little bit more flexibility. Those are the two areas that have come up in my district, so I would ask that we move forward with that. Last thing I'll say is, is we've had some very spirited debate tonight. One thing that I always appreciate about this council is that we debate things. You go to some of these other councils and that it seems like there's very little discussion or everybody's in lockstep, and, and what I think is good about this council is that I think we all are independent, we all look at issues differently. I take issue with some of the comments that some folks have made, but what we do as a council is we move on, and we don't hold things against each other personally, and we make decisions that, that each one of us feels like are in line with, with the, the values and the, the way that we analyze these things, and, and so I'll just once again say to my colleagues here on this council, I appreciate serving with you, and, and I do hope that, that we continue to, to do that in the spirit of, of having our own opinions and moving on. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes. Proposal of contractual matter, acquisition of realty property, and secondly, there's a receipt of legal advice, request to authorize condemnation regarding project number 17228-003, tract 44 S 50, Cell River Widening Phase 2.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move into executive session.
We are out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yeah, we have two motions. The first one is to move to authorize management and county attorney to retain representation as may be needed and to negotiate the acquisition of two properties as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
One more motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Motion to authorize condemnation regarding project number 17228-003, project S 50, Cell River Road Widening Phase 2, tract 44, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.